... And, and you can review that plan, but we've got a very elaborate plan in place that deals with things. And we have had training with the railroad. We brought the railroad people in, their safety people came in, and we've gone over the procedures. They've got a very, very elaborate recovery system that they use whenever they have any of these issues. It's, uh, they pretty much.
And it, also, this is exact reason is with the River Road water line upgrade. I mean, doing that particular project allows us to lose a well field throughout the city and still be able to supply enough water through the rest of the city. Okay, so, as a matter of fact, we lose seven, eight, nine, or ten, or eleven to fourteen. It's, their two wellfields will supply the water.
Yes. Yeah, I think we're, I think we're in good shape as far as water supply, so. Um, anything else on water quality testing? And we've got more plans than. Only more, but. Now would be the time to make those suggestions, get it included in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a ten-year plan, and so we will not do another one for ten years after this one. So, the more we project that, the better we'll be. Can you tell me if it's working now, Tommy? Okay, good. So, anyway, if there's anything else we need to add to the five-year plan, please let me know, and that way we can get it included in. Okay? Anything else on the five-year plan? All right. 12th Street lift station pump replacement.
I have not heard any updates this past month. I know some of them have been made, so they're, I think just piping is waiting for, but, so.
And so we don't?
I, I don't have any new updates from last time.
Okay.
Pumps are in, we're just designing, working on piping, that's it. So, once they get done, they should be able to come up and do the project.
So, before our next meeting, would you please call them and tell them we want a date?
Mike sure will.
Okay, we'll bump him a little, Mike. All right. Uh, Forty-Fifth Place, Forty-Fifth Place water main replacement.
Uh, well, it's, uh, we did get the cost estimate in to complete the project. It's coming at fire at thirty-seven thousand dollars to complete the project with going down Fourth Avenue. Uh, Mike is finished with the prints, uh, there's, there are copies of them there, and they has been posted in the paper, or will be posted in the paper. But, the bid opening on that would be March ninth or sixth, to what day is that? I was looking at my calendar, I didn't, I was using my phone, but, so.
March ninth.
March ninth, so, uh, next calendar, or next utility board meeting, you all will be approving, or not approving, the job and the price that come in it, so. Okay?
Wow.
Any questions about it?
Anyone wants to see, we can do it now.
Craig did make one change to the plan from where it originally started. Um, he's gonna run the water line all the way back to four, down Fourth Avenue to tie it back into Forty-first Street, so it'll be a continuous loop. And so we have one right-of-way that we need to get Russ, to get the paperwork drawn up on. Um, I've already spoken to the landowner, that is not an issue, as soon as Russ gets it done, we will go with that one. And, um, so, it, you know, should make all the residents on Fourth Avenue have better water supply, and, uh, it'll make it better for us, because the system will be all tied together, so.
Another thing too, when that Fourth Avenue extension, uh, it also tie in the Third Avenue too, the two-inch goes through. But, the Fourth Avenue, uh, line upgrade is actually, the pipe being used for that is our eight-inch pipe that we had in stock that we purchased a couple of years, or several years ago, for the River Road project. So, uh, we are using our in-house pipe, so it should, uh, price, keep, keep that price down, so it's, since we already have a pipe in hand, so.
I know the last time we talked about the, where the man, or the, uh, meter boxes were on the two-inch line, did you get a chance to go look at that?
I did not, you mean the valve boxes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have any idea where they were originally?
Yes.
I mean, that building, that structure that they're building, I'm guessing is probably ten foot at least off the property line.
Yeah.
Looks to me like there's gonna be plenty of room for that, so depending on where that meter box is, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, but you need to check it anyway.
That's right, the valve box is right on the property line.
No, no, then that, that building's way back, it won't come anywhere near it.
And we can move it either way, so.
Yeah, it's, there's plenty of room right there, so. Okay, um, Jerry, you came again today, buddy. If you keep pulling around, you're gonna get stuck on this board. Hey, um, tell me, uh, any questions for you? No, the bids will be, they'll be opened on the night. Yeah. You'll see it, yeah, it's under, under the legal section, it'll say the City of Vienna, or the Vienna Utility Board is seeking bids for a water line replacement, and blah, blah, blah. And it'll tell all that, and then it'll tell you that if you're interested, you need to come to the city for the plans. There'll be a handful of contractors will bid on that job, um, so, you know, hopefully we'll get, you know, good prices, but. For, for what, Connie? Yes, they have to be in by the night. Yeah, we'll open them on the ninth, um, and then, you know, the numbers will be there, and then Craig always reviews them, and probably Michael will review them, to make sure that all the specs have been met. And then, uh, it'll be up to the board to approve, you know, typically, the low bid. You don't have to take the low bid in some circumstances, but typically, it's always the low bid. And then, um, it'll have to go back to council for them to say, okay, we now have the number, and allocate that, um, out of the ARP funds, which, that's a given, they've already committed, committed to it. So, we'll, uh, see where that ends up. The board, the, the bill of approval will come here first, then to council for payment, and then we give them the green light, and then it's, you know, up to them to get it done. It'll all be done at the same time. Oh, he's alr-, he's already agreed to it, it's not an issue. Yeah. Um, it, Russ's letter just simply requires a signature, he's already given us permission, so.
Yeah, I think the biggest delay on the project would be actually getting materials, a six-inch of our ice liners, that would be your delay. So, it can be at the ninety days after bid award. Yes.
We don't know. Okay, when we get the bid, when we get the bid in, I mean, honestly, I, it, it usually never happens, but it could come, that we don't get a bid. These guys may be already committed or whatever, so we'll have to make sure that we can get a contractor that'll do the job. Um, and then it's, every one of the contracts has a time limit on it, you have to complete this job by such and such, so, you know. But, um, where we started to where we are today, you're very close. I mean, realistically, I would guess by the end of the summer, your water line will be done. Anything else?
Maybe we'll get lucky and, uh, do as well as the pub did when, on Fort Borman Hill, when that, that bid came back, they, they got pretty lucky on that one.
Let's see.
Yeah. That's who.
Okay, all right, um, Ferguson IPO Water and Wastewater System Improvement Projects, the rate discussions.
Uh, have we heard back from Michael Brooks, that, that Craig had sent that information over? Sure, we've heard anything back yet from Dixie or Michael?
We have not, and I checked yesterday to make sure that if there was a current update, that I could bring it today, and they have not. Dixie Callmire is the lady that's actually plugging in all the numbers, and so, um, she asked us to rank the projects, and so, we've submitted that, and now she's just plugging the numbers in to see where, you know, where they fit.
Okay.
So, uh, that's one of those things where you just, there's nothing we can do to speed that up, so. Um, I, you know, it's, it's very frustrating, there's so much money out there. I mean, there's just millions of dollars out there, and, you know, Senator Manchin, Senator Capito, the Public Service Commission, I mean, there is just all this money out there. But finding the right pathway to get into it is just, I don't know, you know. You, Kim, you mentioned Pub, they have received two multi-million dollar grants.
Yep.
Um, City of Elizabeth, got seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars just to extend the water line. I mean, it, it's unbelievable, there's just, I mean, so, anyway, hopefully they'll take one of our, pick up one of our, our projects, because we, we submitted the trunk line to Parkersburg, and, um, you know, we also submitted the Pond Run project, so maybe one of these days we'll get in the right channel, I don't know. But, at any rate, that's, that's all I know for those right now. Um, then speaking of Pond Run, Craig, the dredging of Pond Run and the dry dams.
Uh, I have not heard anything from Soil Cost Space Department, uh, again, I think everybody's waiting for someone to give them a green light on a grant, so we can all get some money, but, uh, I did include your folder, Lori went out this morning, her and Bill Blair, and took some pictures of our dry dam structure out in McDonough, that's your old drop box, if you happen to get a look at the pictures, you, you see what that structural wood does do, I reference to control flooding through that, we get City of Vienna, so, uh, can y'all see him?
Yes.
Yeah, if you look at the, I mean, particularly like this one here, you see that? That structure there, that's, there's about twelve foot underwater right there, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, when were these pictures taken? That's what I thought you said, because I know we talked.
Yeah.
That's so weird. No, it's not, some of us didn't get it in the drop box, I don't.
It's under Pond Run, there's a.
Thank you, that's weird. I have a special iPad, because I'm special. In so many ways. Thank you.
Yeah, but, you had to look like, said that particular picture right there, if you look at that, that's, that should be all filled, so. I was wondering, like last night, we had inch and a half of rain here, which is counting, got like three and a half inches rain, it's really flooding up there, so, uh, but, water comes down that dry dam, and it fills up with water, so it lets out at a certain rate. If you can see the pictures, you can see, like I said, that structure there, you're about twelve foot below that is the intake, so there's about twelve foot of water in that field, uh, and the firing pitch, couple pitches, you'll see the outfall of that, that structure, so, yeah, it lets it out at a certain rate, which slows the water down from getting in Pond Run, uh, controls the flooding throughout the city, so.
So where is this dry dam exactly, I'm a.
McDonough.
That's what I thought, that's what it looked like.
Yeah, if you look at that picture, that dry dam structure, that, like I said, that field, you see it's all flooded? Actually, actually, that's where some people have proposed the highway go through there, which we do not want, um, so, uh, that is a dry dam structure, it does control flooding in Seattle, City of Vienna, so, just trying to give you guys some references of what, what it actually does out there, so. Soil Cost Space did call and ask us to go take pictures, because they couldn't make it down. So. Uh, reference to the rest of Pond Run, I'm still waiting, so, did you contact that lady?
Uh, Jennifer, Jessica Nichols?
Yeah.
I have not, I'm going to see her.
Yeah, they're, they're waiting for more and some money, so.
Yeah. I spoke with the gentleman this morning, that came up, uh, from Charleston to repair the generator.
Yeah.
Haynes Branch Road, which, I'm not sure if you all know where Haynes Branch Road is, but, um, it's probably eighteen miles out of Charleston. That entire, um, intersection is underwater, can't, you can't, that whole intersection is shut down because of all that rain yesterday.
Hughes River right now is up sixteen feet above normal pool.
Who is?
Hughes River.
Is that right? Yeah.
McFarland.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, a lot of the fields were flooded yesterday, so.
We got lucky. We didn't really get that much rain compared to everybody else.
No, and it, it was a nice soft rain too, it wasn't one of those flash floods like we typically get, so. All right, anything else on Pond Run or the dry dams? Okay, all right, Ferguson IPO Twenty-eighth Street Storm Drainage Improvements.
Yeah, we've got, uh, the whole system laid out, we've identified easements which I need to get to the board to, and start working on, but we don't need any for this first phase we're doing, uh, but, you know, when we get on later phases, uh, we'll need them. But we do already have, I'd say the plan's probably at least sixty percent done, after Craig and I had sat down, discussed it, so, um, my hope is to have something ready, at least to show you by the next, uh, board meeting.
So, when, once you get these plans done, Mike, what are you gonna present us? I mean, are we gonna get bid documents so we can actually start on phase one, or, I mean, how are we gonna do that?
It's up to you.
Yeah, that's, that's how, what we were shooting towards. You know, uh, well, you know, once we come back, we'll give you a, you know, an estimate, and then talk about how or when you want to bid.
And so, phase one, if I recall, goes from the intersection of Fifteenth Avenue and Thirty-first or Thirty-first Street, whatever that is.
Second.
Right there at Ronnie Bumgarner's house. Okay, so that, that first section goes from right there to Pond Run.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
So, we'll, we'll have an estimate and everything next time. Then, like I said, it's up to you guys then when you want to bid. As I, I'm, I'm not sure if we had the funding behind it yet, so.
You know, that's one of those crazy things right there, I mean, until he, until you, and your estimate will give us a better.
Right.
Yes on that, but dude, really, until you get your bids.
Yeah.
You don't know how much money you have to have.
Right.
Okay? Uh. Uh, we'll wait for those, I mean, I, I, getting phase one started would certainly be a major improvement.
Yes.
To that whole area going down through there, so.
At least that interse-, that intersection's bad.
Oh, my. And those people's yards flood every time I, you know, it's, we, hopefully we can figure a way to get that out of those people's yards. Okay. Any questions on the Twenty-eighth Street Stormwater Program? Okay, so then we moved to new business this afternoon, uh, first items in approval of a bid for Ford F-four-fifty, or equal truck, equal truck with a dump bed. Greg?
Yeah, uh, this is the same type of truck, it was the council awarded to the Parks and Public Works Department, this is for, um, utility board, uh, what this does replaces our current, uh, one-ton unit, uh, which is a diesel, uh, got a lot of rust issues, the floor, we put some old signs and stuff in the floors to keep guys from falling out through it, uh, it's pretty bad shape, uh, so, this truck, like I said, come in at, with the toolbox under, sorry, toolbox is actually under the bed, uh, come in at nine-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars, and this is a, what we call two, two-ton dump truck, it's a small pickup dump truck, dual axle, so.
And this, this, if this, uh, truck purchase is approved, it will be financed? I don't know how long Amy will finance it, four, five to seven years, I would guess.
She's got it up to bid now.
For the financing, yeah. Okay, and so, you know, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot, but when you break it out over seven, I don't think we'd go more than seven years.
No.
But at any rate, uh, you know, it'll come out of the budget, um, for the next five years or seven years, whichever that would be, so we're not, we're not actually spending a hundred thousand dollars, we're obligating a hundred thousand dollars, but we will have a, you know, a line item in our budget, we'll make the payments on that, so. Um, any questions for Craig on the truck?
It's, uh, we're ten years old. Ten, ten years old, yeah. Our trucks take a beating with assault, it's, they've rushed out, so, the diesel, this is actually a gasoline truck, because the diesel, I gave an update on camera truck, uh, camera truck's been out in Methane East for over a month, uh, because of diesel issues, uh, what happened with catalytic converter, that truck idled so much, so the diesel plugged catalytic converter up, and, uh, it's three thousand dollar repair for a catalytic converter in that truck, which we did direct, give them approval to do it, now they, they can't find one. So, I got two-hundred thousand dollar camera truck sitting out there that we can't even use, because of diesel generator, diesel motor with the catalytic converter plugged up, so, so I don't, I'm not buying any more diesel pickup trucks, or one tons, the bigger units, the ten-ton units, yeah, that'd be diesel, but, um, the pollution issues on the diesel, it's, it's EPA is pretty crippled, okay? We do have the ten-ton unit out to bid too, that goes streets, it, actually it come in at a hundred-and-forty thousand for, you know, so.
Yeah, I'm surprised, you know, there, there's so much theft on those catalytic converters now, you know, you leave the thing sit outside. You know, you leave the thing sit outside, somebody takes a saw and has it off there and down the road in a matter of minutes. But anyway. All right, so then I would entertain a motion for the approval of the bid from Metheny Motor Truck in the amount of ninety nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the Ford F four fifty truck. And moved in second, that we approved the low bid from Metheny Motor Truck in the amount of ninety nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call for the question, all those in favor of the bid from Metheny for the F four fifty truck, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? All right, motions carries. Okay, let's see where the financing comes in, Craig, is that truck in stock?
It's been produced.
Okay.
Which is what we consider in stock now, yeah, because if you get bid on a to-do list from Ford, you're looking at two years.
So when do we think this thing will be here?
Yeah, it's definitely won't be into July.
Okay.
By August.
Okay. All right, well, I'll take care of that. Uh, lead service line requirements discussion. Mike, I know I asked you to figure out what it would take for you all to oversee our lead and copper program, because I do not want to see us miss anything.
Sure.
All right.
And and what I brought, anyone hasn't seen, I think that's double sided, that's the requirements through US EPA of development. And really the first step of being currently, it's just the end of the tour. There's four different designations, when you look at either a lead line, galvanized line, requiring replacement, a non lock lead line, or have them. The only ones that I consider a lead line are the, you definitely say, is possible with plastics. Anything else you come across is they're going to consider it as lead and you'll have to do something with it. So, you know, what we were going to do, I know Craig has got a good start on it. As far as questioning some, you know, getting those questionnaires out. The end of the day, we'll have to take a look at the entire system and record this information and so on, I assume on G I S. So what we were talking about is if we had something, just like the off meeting, then you know, work with, being able to go through the requirements for looking at, it's a certain date that you can say, any houses after these dates. Think about it here. Yeah, I don't, but I think it's June. June and eighty-eight. It's in there. So any houses that older than that, you do have to look at. You have to go out to each one, if you go and you know, the building was built at a certain time by a certain contractor and you know what that material one is, you can look across and say, okay, we're pretty sure the rest of it will be, and you can go out and do checks on that. So that would be the first step is just kind of look and say, how many houses are there? After that, when you start thinking, okay, well, these are the houses or locations that may have it. There's two different ways they want you to look at it, one is actually go out and meter box, pop it open. For the test, you can do a, see the lead or it's not, or at least the material is there. And that's one thing. Second way is actually do water samples. You got to do a mix up. That tells you how to do it, so. What we would do is just, you know, sit down with Craig, folks, and just say, if you're going to do a sampling, the current, the current actual locations are and then try to get, get back together, put all the information back into G I S and see if there's any missing, anything missing. Once we have a good handle on it, we're the, we're just kind of overseeing that kind of stuff. And then if there's lead line, catalytic converter, those service lines are, if need replaced, we'll put it in the cost estimates. And that's the information that goes into the we're not doing, we're not doing a lot of physical work other than just, you know, said, just trying to agree and make sure that all of us agree.
You know, from a testing standpoint or a monitoring standpoint, however you want to look at it, in my opinion, this is the most critical testing thing that they've put on us as long as I've been here. All right? Because of all that issue in Michigan, Flint, Michigan, and all the problems that they've had with that. This one right here is the one that they are putting a microscope on. And so Craig, Lori, they are so busy with all of the other sampling and all the other stuff that has to be done that that's the reason why I'm asking to get Virgison and Nyepel in as the oversight so that when Lori or Craig or Dave or Jason or whoever does, whatever it is, that we check the box. All right? Since the beginning, when they first started talking about this. One of the things that has concerned me the most is the fact of this testing and they want you to test things that really aren't ours. They're not. You know, we're supposed to go, we're supposed to test the water fountains in all the schools. Because they want to make sure that there's no lead solder. They got old water, old water fountains and all those other things. And so there is a critical sequence of events that has to happen to make sure that we comply with all the regulations on this lead and copper rule. And so although I have great faith in the people that work here, I don't know how many times that Lori has gotten a nasty gram from me because my name's on the bottom line for all of this, so anything that happens comes to me first. Lori hates it when I call her, okay? Because when I get one of these letters from these folks and they say that you didn't do what you were supposed to do, and then we go back to them and said, yes, we did, here's how it was. You know, it's just no fun. And so what I would like to do is I would like to have Virgison and Nyepel because they're at a different level than we are when it comes to these deadlines and all those things to just make sure that we are not in compliance with the lead and copper rule. I I would absolutely hate for us as a city to be in violation of that lead and copper rule if we can help it. You know, there are some things that we can't help. But I know that Craig will have to supply the information to Mike to say, yes, we did this. And then you'll have to document that, here's what we did and how we did comply.
Right, that's kind of the last thing, you know, I had to do with, at the end of the day, it's put together with the report to say, this is what we did, when we did it, how we did it. So if anyone ever came back and said, we're the same thing I am, it's this one, what happened?
Well.
And so documenting that, how we did it very poorly.
In in defense of Lori and Craig, that is without a doubt the most poorly run division of anything that we deal with. We got a notice of violation because we didn't get something done. And so when I responded back to the woman that was in charge, she said, oh, you know what, I'm sorry. She said, I'm now in charge of Division Six, you guys are in Division Five. And she said, I trained that guy to take over Division Five for me, and the day that he got done training, he quit. And she said, I didn't realize I was back in charge of Division Five. And so she says, I'm in charge of Division Five and Division Six now, and so that's how this happened. Am I telling the truth? It is, that's a fact, okay? And so although we did, and it had to do with sampling points, we did the samples, okay? But because this guy never, he quit, they didn't replace him, they didn't get it done. So then we get a letter back that says, no further action required. Well, guess what? That wasn't true. And so we're still trying to get that all sorted out, but it's not our fault. These people have no clue what the right hand's doing opposed to the left. And so I'm sorry, I'm not willing to take the chance as a city to not comply with the lead and copper rule. It's just too big of a deal. And I don't believe, of course, I haven't gotten a number from Mike yet, but I don't believe that it's going to be a large sum of money because it's simply reviewing paperwork to make sure that we've done all of the things that we're required to do in a timely fashion. Hopefully, when you and Craig get together, you know, we've been doing this since we installed the water meters eight years ago. At that time, we opened every meter box in the city. It doesn't take, you know, you just look down in there and if you see a black plastic line going, you know we're in good shape. Pretty simple, and I know that you noted anything that wasn't the way it should have been, but we need a timeline, we need it, we need every box checked. Okay? So that's the reason why that I've asked them to do this and for it, it's like an insurance policy. Okay? Hopefully, we won't miss any of the, any of the boxes. Okay?
Let's be clear on that violation too, it wasn't that we didn't take a test, we did test it twice. Each location they designated, well, violation was that we didn't send the results to the people we tested that, okay? So. All right. Yeah, they were done, but what noted, so.
Yeah, their their.
Everything was done like it was coordinated, they didn't.
Their paper was terrible.
Notified, so, but, you know, I want to talk to you guys about letting copper rule here, because we're, this thing absolutely scares me to death. You know, we sent out questionnaires in the building to every resident in this city.
Okay.
Asking them with a questionnaire, look, you can either fill us out paper form, or you get online through our portal and fill out online what the questions were, and what I have to do, what was in your house? What types of pipes, when your house built, I got that, we got back, how many Tommy, less than eight hundred or? So out of six thousand? That we put on our webpage, asking people fill it out. I'm not getting any responses from these people. Okay, from the residents, so that means, like you said, now we have to go in their house to inspect their interior plumbing, well, our residents don't want me in their house, okay? I don't want to go in a lot of people's house, okay, that's just privacy issues, but we're going to have to. Now, we had done inspections of the meters when we did the meter replacement, but this is going to cost a city a half million dollars in labor rates just to get the reporting stuff done, and ours, I'm going to have this. This is the money that I will never get reimbursed for. This is the money that EPA, DEP pits on our system. This is the reason the rates have to be in place, okay? And everybody says, well, you, what do you use rates, what you got to raise rates for? Because of these projects alone, all right? My, like I said, a half million dollars in labor rate to get this project done. And then we decide if I do find, find a lead pipe, who's going to replace that pipe? They still haven't made that decision, have they? So it could come back to the city where we start replacing service lines from the house to the meter and clues inside the house. I don't have the financial means to do that. You know? So this scares me, this this could bankrupt a lot of water companies in this state. What it's going to do is bankrupt them, where they're going to go through and get bought up by American Water, and they're going to pay, people's going to pay five times more than what they are now, but that's my soapbox, so I'm, this is, this is this is a hard project, so I appreciate Mike's help, but we're doing the best we can, we've set up questionnaires, we just rely on our customers to fill that stuff out, and that's been the draw.
Is this issue discussed at your water meetings in Charleston?
Oh, my gosh.
Amongst all, every, all the utilities? Every time.
Every time, I mean, and it's getting worse, that's Craig's right, it's getting worse, that's the problem, because you know, everybody's concerned about lead, because when it gets in kids, it causes a lot of problems for kids, so that's what they're trying to monitor. But to say that city of Vienna has to go out and change the supply line into your house? And a lot of these people, Craig's right, with COVID, that's part of what's caused all this problem is because with COVID, no one wants you to come into our house for the fear of that. And the second thing is, you know, we don't want to replace service lines into everybody's houses, my gosh, that would be terrible. But they don't care, they make this rule and then you figure out how to do it.
It's your EPA.
That's it, you know, here's the problem, you fix it.
My question is, when you do it and how long are you responsible?
Right. Yeah, and if you put a water line in somebody's basement and fitting's not tight and you flood their basement, well, guess what? You'll get to pay for that too. Mike goes to every water quality meeting we go to, Joe, and and it's it's a
These are the questions.
It never goes away.
Yeah.
Yeah, never goes away.
Yeah, and I was concerned, just like you brought up, the administration and the work they put on you guys to make this happen. Real addition to what they're doing.
Well, you know, it it's it's, it's an unfortunate situation, it just is. But we have to protect ourselves, that's all there is to it. They don't care. And you write them and you explain to them, look, this is what happened. You're still in violation, too bad.
Yeah.
You know? Am I saying right? You know.
And next Wednesday, between one thirty and three thirty, we have that meeting conference called, talking about new testing regulations, where I'll start doing. More, under new tests, what's costing a hundred thousand dollars. Where's that money come from? Okay?
Well, we have.
Man, our rates are our rates, we don't have any, we have this amount of money. You know, every, our products are, our line repair product's going up, everything's going up. So.
Anyway, Mike, just please tell us what it'll cost to have you do the oversight on this project for us. And then I want you to pick Craig and Lori apart. Make them, make sure they, you know.
Is that, is that kind of scope though, I mean?
Yeah.
Do you think that's?
Oh, no, that's, you're perfectly right on what you talked about. And like, we've done a lot of stuff you referred to, so we'll give that to you, but, yeah, we'll we'll show you what we've done. We'll note it and go on, but we we're, we're ahead of the game, okay, don't think we're not, but we'll make sure our eyes are dotted and D's across, right, so.
And you'd ask me about other places we've done it?
Yeah.
And this, yeah, six. You got to ask all the other stuff. So I mean, what Craig is doing is is saving the city. Well, sometimes you don't hear that part of, you know, this this will save.
Well, I I can tell you. Joe, you asked about the water quality meetings. There's a city in West Virginia that they literally got caught in a perfect storm. It was the Fourth of July weekend, and they got notification that they had to perform this set of sampling within three days. Well, they only have a, I think they only have four employees in their water department. Two of them are on vacation. The other two, it was the Fourth of July weekend, which meant they were closed on Monday. And so third, fourth, fifth, there's no work. So they missed this three day deadline. I mean, they slammed, it was some incredible fine. And they went to them and said, hey, look, this is a timing issue, this is not something we neglected to do, this was a timing issue. Write us a check, that was it. Am I right? Yeah. I mean, it's it's time.
It's like two hundred thousand dollar check, okay, so.
Oh, it was big.
Yeah.
And it was one of those things where there's nobody could have planned for that. What are you going to do, drag a guy back in off vacation, Florida to do this job? No way.
They're just being unrealistic.
Yeah. You know, and you talk about the expenses and and being a city, you know, West Virginia was originally two hundred and thirty-two cities, we're down to two twenty-nine now. Three cities have just owned a town and said, hey, we can't afford it, we're not going to be incorporated anymore. You know? You know? So. It's just
Yeah, I wonder how many water companies just closed down last two years too.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you know, American Water has a lot of the smaller communities in the southern part of the state. So I don't know. At any rate, well, Mike, we need, we need your help. We need your help. All right? Any questions about the lead requirements? Okay. Manager's report.
Uh, to give you an update, like, on vehicles, uh, I did have a unit go down this past week, we'll call Unit fourteen, it's a, actually our one of our newest trucks, and that was a, it was bought in two thousand seventeen. That actually is the newest fleet truck we have, I just, my little Ford Rangers, the city got, I, I wish Tommy and Lori, MB drives. Uh, it was purchased last year, but the transmission went out of it, and the motor's going out of it, it's actually using three quarts of oil uh, every two weeks, and the transmission went out this past week. We're looking at prices about replacing both, you're probably looking at ten grand, so. I talked to one of the, uh, dealers here in town, Metheny's, and asked if he could give us prices on possibly a little Ford Ranger, four-cylinder, standard cab, something to replace that, uh. As in reason, I'll probably bring back to you guys and say, and do you wanna spend the ten thousand? Or do you wanna purchase this truck for this? But, this is the first time I've lost a vehicle mechanically for a while, so, complete failure, so. Just getting you guys' heads up on that, so. Did a ten class training course yesterday, and, uh, some safety classes. Not only me, but four other guys in this department down in Parkersburg, uh, two-day courses, uh, it was on uh, safety issues, uh, confined space entry, um, some other issues, so, went pretty well. I will say our train room's better than theirs is, so. At least a little bit quieter, so. Yeah, yeah, it don't smell as bad either, right? So, for some reason, that plant that has got a real nasty smell to it, and then I did talk to Steve while I'm down there. Um. Anything else going well, uh, we did have water break over in Conley Drive, uh, but the lady's basement out, so we're, uh, got some prices, got an order to product to replace that one hundred and twenty feet of six-inch line. It's old transite, we've had four breaks in the last five years, so, we're gonna do that project in-house, uh, cost the line and the valves and the dressers, and the mega logs and the nineties, coming right on five thousand dollars, so. We'll get that replaced, like I said, we'll do it in-house, that's about a two-day job for us, we'll lay the line one day, next day we'll come out tie it all in together and flush it, so, she shouldn't have any more problems, really nice lady, so. We did flood her basement, actually her parents' house, she was watching it for the, while it was down in Florida, but so, did have some damage there, but we actually went inside and helped her clean it up, put some fans and stuff out for her, so. Yeah, that's the same water line, actually ran into his garage a couple of years ago, that took the floor out of the garage, so.
Did you say Colony Drive?
Conley Drive, Conley Drive.
Conley Drive?
Yeah, off of River Road.
Colony.
Colony.
Fifty, it would be the end of C O, fifty-third, really, is that a little short?
Yeah, that's right, I was just couldn't hear what you were saying.
Yeah, Conley Drive's in mineral wells, we're not going out there.
No, Conley, Conley Drive, so.
Conley.
Conley. Hey, is that street down off of River Road?
Yeah, I know where it's at, I just wasn't getting it with what you were saying.
Sorry. Yeah, it's going pretty well, so. You guys, any questions, or any updates, anything you want?
What are the meters, any updates on those?
Uh, Russ wrote a letter to them, um, signed up, put on a letter today, and it should go out today, so. A little nasty letter, but sounded really nice, so.
Well, nasty letters are fine, they need it.
Yep.
Anything else for Craig? Okay. Joe? Nothing here. Yep?
No.
John? Great. Peter, thank you very much.